All right, we're all set. Good evening, welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting for Thursday, April 11th, 2013. First item is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the special session of March 28th, the regular session of March 28th, public relations on March 22nd, acceptance of warrants 48v13 and 40p13.
I second.
Any further discussion? We need a motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a motion first, sorry. And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, student rep Cole.
Hi. Well, the first thing, the first thing I want to talk about was middle school play and how that went off like without a hitch. It was awesome. I'm so proud of all the kids that put so much effort into it and it was just a month. They did it all in just a month and I'm really, really happy.
With your guidance and help and support and a lot of other, some other high school students, yes.
No, I was really happy with that. We also just had a student recital last night, which was really good. I didn't realize how many talented kids we had in the school, very, very musically talented. And I'm not sure how sports teams are doing. I'm pretty sure boys across is either two and one or three and oh, have a very good start to their season. Track, we just had a meet today and I left early, but I'm pretty sure we won too. So that was really, that was good. We're doing really well and...
Baseball had opening day last week.
They did have opening day and they, and they had a nice, a really nice little ceremony beforehand where they got their banner. The captains were awarded the banner, which is going to obviously go into the gym. And it was really nice because apparently the GAA teams that had won their various divisions, I guess it's all done by age.
Right.
They all came to the game and then before the team, Georgetown team was introduced, they all, you know, took the field to whatever position they play. So it was really very nice to have the young kids, you know, involved in the, in the opening day ceremony. So it was, it was all very, very nice. It was a gorgeous day too for baseball.
There was an article in the newspaper today about the girls softball, showing a lot of promise for the season. They're all excited about that.
That's great.
Good things. Okay, is there anyone here from the public who wishes to comment on anything that's on the agenda tonight? Okay. Okay, next up is, do you want to do the under administrator report?
Sure, sure.
Do you want to do the fine?
Yes, one of the very exciting things that we get to do at, at school committee meetings often is to recognize some outstanding achievements of some of our very talented students. Sometimes those recognitions are athletic related, sometimes they're academically related, other times they're arts related. And that's what we're going to do tonight. I received some information from Ms. Dodge, who's, who's also here today, letting me know that I think for the first time ever, we have a student who placed at the national level in a national award. And in your, I think Martha, you sent this along, right? In your, very artistically done by the way, Ms. Dodge put together for, for your information, just an overview of all the students who participated at the state art competitions. Every year we, we have children who go and place well.
All those students placed.
Yes.
We had more that participated, but those are the winners.
Okay. Wonderful. And so tonight, we have, we have Hannah here, right? Yep. And you see at the top, it's unfortunately, because it's black and white, even though it's black and white art, it's probably doesn't do justice at all to the, to the wonderful piece of artwork. But she was recognized as a senior key winner at the national level and the gold key winner at the state level. And that, that's very, very awesome and hard to do. So congratulations to you. What was that experience like for you?
I was completely shocked. It started off as just a school assignment and I asked Mrs. Dodge if I could do an effect called the saboteur, which gives it that shiny effect around it. And she goes, Hannah, that's awesome. You should submit for a scholastic art award. So I just did and it was a huge surprise to me.
She knows what, what people like in those competitions. Yeah, well, we, we're very proud of you and congratulations to you and your family. And I know our school is very proud. And you, I'm sure a lot of your work will be displayed at the art show.
Yeah.
Yes. So I want to, is that been scheduled Martha?
Yeah, I believe it's May 21st.
Okay. It's really worth coming. It's very nicely done, the whole, you know, foyer and the halls around the, the gym and cafeteria area are all just displayed with wonderful pieces of art of all different mediums.
And there's a film festival.
And then there's the film festival, which is really fun because that's audience participation.
And I knew this year will, it'll be the first year we're inducting our National Art Honor Society members too.
Great.
We're adding more to the ceremony.
Right. And it really is nice. I mean, it's very informal. You, you kind of walk around and just enjoy and, you know, the artists are there, but there's always in the, in the cafeteria area, there's always a, a sort of a display of all the different kinds of art from the seniors.
Yes.
Specifically focusing on the seniors and their art. So as opposed to just kind of being on the walls, you know, and just in, in sort of arrays, this is like a real portfolio, so to speak. And, you know, if you want to come and see not only this piece, but other pieces by Hannah and I just think we should, just for the benefit of the public that's not having the chance to see this, Courtney Tanner, also a senior, received a gold key winner at the state level for cardboard sculpture, which was, I guess independent artist, the category? Is that, yeah? And Nick Memelet, also a senior for action photography. I know he's always in the film festival, I see things that he does. Silver key winner at the state level. And then there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven honorable mentions. Cloth drawing, so Courtney Tanner had, looks like three pieces that received honorable mention and Nick had another, another piece of photography that received honorable mention. And then Alex Grineer, who's an 11th grader and Tatiana Memelet, sister of Nick, yeah, runs in the family apparently, grade 10 for some ceramics and Gemini Hoffman for some ceramics. So it's, it's just nice to see that our program, well, it's very popular every year, you know, in terms of subscriptions of kids who take the classes. But we also are very successful in having students who go on out of our high school into art programs and art schools and are very successful there as well. So...
Is there art in your future Hannah?
I'm going into a communications field, not really art.
But very creative.
Yeah, exactly, creative. Of the, all the art mediums, what's your favorite?
Photography.
You like photography?
Yeah.
And that's a skill for life.
And I like painting.
That's probably your interpretation. You're probably very impressed.
I'm sure. Maybe it doesn't be a skill for life too. But congratulations. It's very, very exciting. Great.
Hannah, what was that technique you, you used?
The saboteur.
Why did you want to use it?
Because we did it for a previous project and I liked how shiny and mysterious it looked. So it was actually a picture of Maddie Crado, who's actually a student at our school. And she was running down the hallway and it was an action photo, but you couldn't tell with the effect and I just thought it was so spooky and different. So that's why I wanted to do it.
And that's one of the, one of the things they look for at the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Awards is just not skill and technique, that's a part of it, but it's also personal voice and a student's vision. So they look for things that may be a little different, because I know some people will look at her, the winning piece and make negative comments about it. Well, that's not pretty. That's not good.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
And what she said it is, if you actually see it in, in black and white, it is eerie and creepy and it has a surreal look, which is great.
It sounds like, it sounds like, from what I can see, that it opened a door to a mystery.
It looks like a cover of like a horror book.
There's, for the art department, there's no higher calling as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
And so, congratulations.
So could you tell us again, the art show is what time?
It's 6 to 8.
6 to 8. And it is a drop in, you don't have to be there the whole time. And it, but you know, it, it really is a wonderful opportunity, just like I, I wrote to you in here, the Fine Arts Week at Pembroke was, and many of you I saw there, so I know people participated, but you know, it's just a, arts are important all the time, but when you take time to really, really recognize and celebrate, you know, the talents of students, you know, some students that are not as gifted academically really excel artistically and some kids are good at everything. But you know, it's just really nice to see the creative outlets be part of, you know, arts and education. It is, it is a discipline and it is an important, as important as academics, you know, to, to the overall whole child. So, you know, thank you for making the time to come here tonight and congratulations on your awards and to all of the students, not only those that received awards, but just to participate says a lot, you know, about, it's hard to put yourself out there. You have to be create, creative but courageous, right? So thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck next year.
Thanks for having us.
You're welcome. Thank you Martha. Keep us in the loop on anything like that. So we'd love to recognize the students.
Thank you.
It's one of the best parts of these meetings.
It really is.
Sure. Okay, so we talked about Fine Arts Week. Turf project update.
Okay, turf project update. So I know Barbie isn't here tonight and I knew she wasn't going to be here. So you know, one of the things that we've kind of all agreed is that as there are sort of milestones in some of these projects, you know, we would come back and let the committee know kind of what, what's happened. So a couple of things, the CPC, I think you knew, voted to approve the warrant article, to put a warrant article. They had nine projects out of a number of projects that were sent into them. There was a lot of really good discussion and at the end of the day, there was, there is going to be a warrant article on the town meeting warrant that asks the town to approve $250,000 of CPC money that is in their current accounts. And they, at the same time, there'd be a one, not to exceed $1 million bond that the town would take. I think the discussion still is how many years, you know, because they're, they want to make sure that the allocation of CPC mon, money that can be used for open space and recreation is not completely expended as a result of this project, because there, there are still needs in the town. There's, there, this doesn't affect the, there's always going to be a standard allocation for projects that fall into affordable housing and fall into, what's the other one? There's another cate, oh.
Historic?
Historic preservation and restoration, thank you. And then there's, there's this category, open space and recreation. And so this is the first time that a bond would be taken out. The discussion, that main discussion had to do with, there seemed to be strong support of the project. The two votes that were against were not the project, I did not get the sense, they were the funding of the project. So there was agreement to that there should be some money this year for CPC money that would allow the final design, would allow the bidding, you know, permitting, all those kind of things to go through and then come back next year to the voters and ask for the bond. There was some fear and concern about if the two weren't tied together, that, that there may not, they may not be as much support for the project, because you don't know how things change within a year. So the, at the end of the day, the vote went three to two to do both and just make the commitment to the project. And then from there, obviously lock it out in ways that the town can both afford and that it doesn't completely deplete, you know, the, the opportunity for some, maybe some other projects. So there was a public hearing, all of the projects that got approved by CPC, there was a public hearing that happened recently. And the goal was for each group that had the proposed, put the proposal in, to do a little quick synopsis of their project. It's all, was all televised and so that's great, so the public had a chance to see that. And then anybody in the audience, as well as CPC members, could ask any questions. So it actually generated, I think, a nice, productive, lively conversation and some of the questions that were raised there were clearly questions that I know will come up at town meeting. So it was really a good opportunity. The gentleman from Gale Associates was there. So he was very helpful in being able to speak to, you know, the elements of the project. And then John Pingree and Mark Perry presented the slideshow that I put in here for your information. I also did include the proposal. So the last stack, that's what we call ourselves, Synthetic Turf Advisory Committee, the stack committee, at the last stack committee meeting, there was discussion as to the first phase of the project. That actually is the phase that goes all the way through the development of construction documents. The stack committee, under the advice that they received from some members of the town administration, in terms of the process, was that the design and consultation part of the process, which is the engineering study stuff, municipalities are not required, that is not subject to public bid. You don't have to do a public bid. Having said that, you know, and this is, Mike Farrell actually gave me this information because I, I had to research it, was that an engineering firm that can be awarded this, the contract, a contract to develop the design, to produce the schematic design documents, do the whole process, all the way up until after the construction documents are completed, then it gets turned over to Mike Farrell, because Mike is the chief procurement officer for the town. In fact, Joan and I had that conversation one day with him. So Mike would then take all of those documents, make sure the appropriate, it would then be subject to the public bid law. So he would design, take all those documents, he would get it all out, all, all the timeframes he had to pay attention to and all that, he would award the bids and then on we go. I think the reason that the stack committee, because they did discuss the idea of, you know, what should we do, what should be done in this first stage of the process. And I think the reason that the decision was made to go with Gale, number one, they have put in, I think those of you who've heard different document, different presentations have seen, that they have done a lot of turf fields. In fact, they did one at Dartmouth, they did it Roger Williams, they've done a lot of turf fields across the state. So the first assumption was they know what they're doing, they're qualified to do it. Number two was that they have been working on this project, you know, in various capacities for probably the better part of four years. So, you know, they did some initial documentation, they, they put some things together, they've, you know, reported on this, answered questions at various forums. They know the site, they know the players, they know, you know, they think they know the community. And so, you know, they're, they're obviously very, they were very interested in continuing with this. And I think the, the folks who've been working with them felt some, you know, some confidence that they would be the, the group to move forward with this project in this first phase, understanding of course that the bidding process would take place after that. So I just wanted you to, number one, I wanted you to see the proposal and partly I wanted Rob to have a chance to, because in particular, I know he's got a lot of interest and curiosity about it because of your background and what you do for work. So I know the committee has asked in the past, you know, can we be in the loop? So that's why I wanted you to be in the loop. These were documents that were out to other boards, you should have them. And I didn't really put it on for a huge discussion item, I just wanted to give you an update more than anything else. Of course, certainly if people want to discuss it, we can do that. But you know, it really was, it was an update. You know, I didn't bring, you know, the staff committee or, you know, or Gale or anybody else here for it. It just was really, my intention was to give you an update and answer any questions that you might have. If there are specific questions that you have, I'd be more than happy to take them down, get information and get back to, to anyone on this.
We should, you know how we have Ellie and Michelle come? I appreciate, I mean, I'm thrilled that we have this information, but we should find out what their, what the stack timeline is and have them come. And again, just a recommendation, you know, every couple months or, once they hit milestone.
Yes, well, the first, well, obviously, obviously the thing I should emphasize is this proposal that's in here, none of that happens unless the town meeting says yay to it.
Right.
So obviously, you know, again, the gentleman from Gale came the other night to help answer any questions, but he did that basically gratis, you know, understanding he wasn't going to be paid. And he understands that this proposal, you know, if, if executed, you know, there's no guarantee, obviously, if the turf, if the town does not approve the turf project going forward. So it was, it's really just a, you know, for us, it's a scope of work and I wanted you to see what kinds of process would be followed. So, so yes, I think that's fair and if this project, you know, passes town meeting, then absolutely, just as we do with the building committee, we, whatever, you know, your wish is in terms of how often, we will definitely, you know, have regular reports. And then of course Barbie, just as you always report each month, I mean Barbie can also do that. And remember, I just remind people, they're public meetings. And if, if any, at any point, anybody wants to come or, or, you know, attend, you, you would be welcome, you know, and your input would be, you know, considered.
So if I could just comment on that, on that item, just share my observation as more than just my interest, this, this is exactly the work that I do. I, my, my observation is that I'm, I'm very disappointed that they did not engage any other firms for an interview. The, I, I think it's fair to say the industry standard for these kinds of projects, you typically go through an RFP, RFQ, request for proposal, request for qualification. It's typical in the industry and it's understood in the industry that you work like this pro bono in hopes of getting an opportunity to bid on a project. So I, I definitely appreciate the long history they have with Gale, but my experience tells me it's not necessarily the best way to get the best price or to get the best product for the town. And as I know, we're all school committee members and care about the school and the facilities, I just wanted you all to know that.
Okay. All right. Just curiously, at this point, given that, is there anything that can be done about what? Well, this has already been agreed to?
No, well, my, my understanding is that, that there's been a, a discussion with the Gale gentleman. And I think there's an assumption he's going, that it's going to be executed.
Okay.
Now, you're asking, is there anything that can be done? I, you know, I mean, at this point in time, I think they're planning to move forward, but I think, you know, Rob makes a point, you know, certainly, I mean, I, I would invite Rob and, and anyone else, if they want to make that, if they're concerned about that, they should come to the next stack meeting and express it with the group that's, you know.
That's the group that would affect.
Considering, considering.
And is, is there a meeting before the town meeting?
You know, I think that there isn't a meeting.
Just one person at a time, I'm getting, I'm here.
Sorry, I thought I was answering that question.
Rob, do you want to?
No, I was just going to say, there are only so many meetings you can go to, that's the problem.
Right, but we have, we had...
I have been sharing with people to share at the meetings and so I've been doing my job.
Okay, good, yeah, good. Good, that's, that's helpful.
Yeah, because we have Barbie, who's our rep. She's one of seven voting members, I don't know how many, she's one voting.
There are seven voting members, yes. But you know, I, I think also, I mean, John, John Pingree is the chair of the committee, you know, I'm, I'm sure, you know, he'd be happy to have a discussion, at least to share the process and why he feels strongly with the, you know, with the process that they're, they're going for. And maybe, you know, if there was further discussion as to, you know, the industry standards, maybe, you know, I know he did consult, before he brought that to the stack committee, he did consult with, you know, at least two that I know of. I don't want to share names on TV, but with two people that have extensive experience with this and that's why he went with, you know, certainly if the, if the industry standard or the recommendation or the need was to go through that process. My understanding from Mike and my conversation with him this afternoon was, is that municipalities are not required in the design and consultation phases now, not required and it's a good idea, are two different things, I understand that, but I'm just speaking to the requirement.
And that's absolutely true.
Yeah.
And, and my, my disappointment is not a reflection of that I'm against the turf field project. It's, it's nothing more than what I said.
It's the process. Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I'll definitely bring that up, Rob.
And you've made that clear with John and Mike?
I have a email into them and waiting to hear from them. And I had talked with committee members and shared this with them well before they made this decision, so my concerns were expressed.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, superintendent's information for the committee, any questions on that? Okay, special education evaluation contract.
Yes, in your orange notes, I, I had spoke, I had mentioned that in our strategic plan, one of the things that we, we've been talking about as we've been doing all this work on redesign of internal special education programs, that it's, you know, it's one thing for Donna as her new, as the new special education director to evaluate the programs, which she's, you know, done and is continuing to do. But it's always a good idea to have external folks come in and take a look at your, at your practices and your business, your business practices. We do have coordinated program reviews every six years. In fact, we have one next year. It's kind of an up, it's, it's a check, I don't call it check-in, but there were some things that we had to work on, we fixed them, they were satisfied, but now they want to come back and just make sure in fact that they're kind of institutionalized. But this is different. This is, this is actually looking at, you know, experts in the field that do this business of evaluating programs, you know, against standards and laws and best practices. And so Donna had some recommendations from a few of her colleagues. We did, I think Joan and I and, and Donna reviewed two in particular that submitted. One is the one we've selected. And this, this one, you know, we feel it, it describes in detail exactly what we're looking for, the products that we're looking for, deliverables, and then the cost is right in the ballpark of what we expected it to, to cost.
And we budgeted for.
And we, and we budgeted for it in a grant. So it doesn't hit the budget, but I, you know, whenever we execute, you know, a contract like this, I want the committee to know that we're doing it, this external stuff too.
We've done this before, haven't we?
We, I don't think in my time, not in my time, I don't think we've done something of this to this extent. We have had evaluations done before, but that's the CPR.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
That's a little different. And then, you know, I just, I did explain just for the new, newer members, that contracts, if there, there are certain contracts, most contracts, we, we are authorized to sign on behalf of the district. And generally I let you know if there, if there are contracts that, you know, you should know about. But if it's a multi-year contract, and we have had a couple of those, like leap technology leases, things like that, that the committee has committed money to, those must be signed and approved by the school committee. Okay. So is there any questions about this? Donna, you know, was the one who was dealing with it, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any.
I think it's great that we're doing it. Thank you for pulling it together.
Me too. And I'll be seeking a person or two from the school committee who would like to participate in some of the interview process, so.
Oh, great. What about timeframe Donna? What about timeframe Donna?
The interviews will take place, I'm trying to think now, I believe the days for March 9th and 10th, May 9th and 10th.
And when would there be perhaps a, a document for all of us to review?
Probably by the end of the school year, but the process is going to begin at the end of the month. So the first step in the process is going to be a comprehensive document review, which will include IP's that we have from all of the different levels, evaluations, the assessment of, you know, paraprofessional schedules, related service schedules, an assessment of the descriptions of our programs, looking at the service delivery models, all of those different pieces. So that's going to be the step one. Second step is going to be to do walkthroughs for the school, which will include taking a look at the different programs, seeing the function of those programs. Then the interviews will commence and we're looking at all the stakeholders within the district, which includes school committee people, students that are involved in individual education plans, general education teaches, special education teaches, paraprofessionals, parents, principals, you know, everybody together, the comprehensive information. Also a comparison of other similar districts will be done about the costs, the programs, the percentages of students who are identified, the percentage of where they're identified. So we'll have a complete analysis and a comprehensive report. What I'm really pleased about is the individual in particular who will be looking at Georgetown was himself a superintendent. was himself a superintendent and a director of special education, as well as a special education teacher. So, he really has a good comprehensive understanding of the format, so I think that that's a fortune of ours as well. So, after that, it'll probably be, I would guess sometime in June, mid-June, that we'll have the final report that we can analyze. And, you know, certainly Carol and I can present those findings to you.
And how, how will, um, like, for example, if parents are listening to this and they might say, oh, I'd be interested in that, how, what's the process for, uh, letting someone know they might like to be part of this? Or do you do a rant, do you just do a random lottery? I, how do, how do we decide on that?
What I'm going to look at is selecting, um, parents from the different schools and as well as from the different, uh, areas that their students might be participating in with regard to special education and then sending some letters out, um, based on the criteria that they'll meet. So, we have a nice cross-section across the district.
And well, it's interesting, 'cause sometimes I know, um, in different areas of consulting, they actually won't let you do the choosing. They'll go through your files and say, I would like to see, especially when it comes to students and parents. They might, you know, go through all of your files and say, would like this student, this student, and this student, and then.
When I was a Title I director, that's what they did, they, they came in and said, you know, here's your thirty students, I'm just ranting, this, 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 and you had to go get their records and, and their parents, yep, so, yeah, okay.
And no matter how they do it, it'll be a great work product.
Yes, it will, and thank you, Donna, for taking the lead on that.
I'm excited to see the results.
Okay, moving right along to the Pearlie, um, renovation updates.
I gave the committee a memo of where we are right now. Um, I haven't heard back from the firm that I, um, was directed to by, um, David Hart. He was the one that had done the original study for the town. Um, I attached, you probably had seen it. It's really small, I had not seen it before. It was really small, but at least it gives you an idea of the areas that we'd be looking to, um, repair or replace with this project. So, um, you know, perhaps we may have to go out and do an, an RFP to get design services, because I, you know, I reached out to this firm and I haven't heard back yet, so. Mike, if that's the case, Mike Farrell will have to take the lead on that, I haven't been certified yet to write those bid specs, so.
The goal is to get the work done this summer, because we, last thing we want is a roof project in the middle of the fall, you know.
Although, I questioned it because Margaret was concerned about, you know, any, anything we have going on there this summer, whatever. And, um, Mike felt, Mike Anderson and, um, you know, and I walked the building and he felt that it wouldn't inhibit, you know, it wasn't like last year's project, last year's project was huge.
Whole back of the building and this, this, you know, the preschool concerns itself with just that, that preschool wing. Um, and I, I know Donna, you're using some spaces there too, right? But a lot of the work will be done in the front of the building, so we can, we can deal with the staging and, you know, the trucks and things in the front. We'll park somewhere else.
So, I'll keep you up to date as I know anything.
Thank you, all right, town warrant articles, um.
Yes, I just wanted to point out, just so you know, that in our, in our, um, in this document, this, this is a sneak preview. Um, 'cause there, there's still were some decisions and discussions that were having, that being had. But, um, I just wanted you to know that there were three projects, capital projects paid out of that capital fund that they established last year, that were, um, going to be addressing school matters. Um, the intercom system, which we identified as a safety issue, we use it as a central thing for our Code Blue and, now, they're not doing anything at Pembroke because of the upcoming renovate, you know, redo of the school. But this would be for Pearlie and the middle high school. And Peter, I think, how old is the intercom system that you have, do you know?
I'm pretty sure it's original to the building.
Just a year or two.
So, it's,
We did, we did a software upgrade on it, um, probably three years ago. But you can only do so much with the hardware.
Yeah, it, we, it's, we really have, it's, it's not functioning often and it, it's, it's a problem. So, got that, and then the other was the replacement of the handicap ramp, if you've been there lately, I mean, that's just a safety hazard and it really is. And the HVAC, I think initially there was some reservation about it, they thought maybe it was, uh, just the air conditioning. But it really is the air heating and air conditioning, so in this.
Well, it's the air handler, right?
It's the air handler.
So, it's both.
Yeah, it's both, and I know Peter can tell you that they, you know, Laura LaFlem has the classes in there. And, you know, they were often wearing their coats, you know, for class, 'cause it's just, it's cold in there. So, we're very grateful and excited and hopefully the voters will see, you know, see, um, see fit to support this. One of the questions, though, that I should just point out, and I did come up at the, at the meeting, so I just wanna, uh, you know, kinda state it for the committee. And that is that I think there was a lot of support for the intercom, but maybe not for the other two projects, 'cause there was some thinking about, well, if we do renovations, the town appropriates money for renovations, these could be done as part of that renovation. But the renovation project at the middle high school, if you recall, is gonna be very specific things. There were actually, so it's, it's not like we can throw a lot of new things into that. Um, and because these things can't really wait two and three years, I think they, you know, the FinCom agreed when we presented that, you know, if the money is in the capital fund, they, we should at least bring it forward to the town.
Projects are to reconfigure the school to be appropriate for the five grades.
Yes, yes, and.
Versus repairs.
Exactly.
Like this.
Right, and it, one of the questions that also came up is, why do we need the new HVAC unit after we did the Edsco grant? And when they went through the Edsco evaluation of all of our facilities and our, um, systems, they wouldn't pick this up because it couldn't be repaired to a point where it would operate efficiently.
And they would, they didn't see their return, they didn't see their return. But, but it's a, it's a, it's a core, I mean, how often is that auditorium used? Like, for every town, every town, you know, event that we need and, as well as it's, it is a teaching station. That's one of the things in NIASC has cited us on, is that we have our choral music program on the stage. So, that's in this renovation, middle high school renovation project, that would be something that would be addressed and taken care of, so that would no longer be necessary.
And have we heard about our budget yet?
We have not heard officially about our budget, but, but my understanding, kind of unofficially, is at this point in time, uh, our budget request, as, as it was made, is what is included in the budget. Um, no, you know, Sandy, Sandy Garrity, who's the chair of the FinCom, and actually, you know, Mike Farrell, we, we talked about, I asked them about it and they said, um, that they're, they didn't anticipate we would need to make any cuts. So, you know.
Um, so, just as a matter of housekeeping, Rob, you will have to present the warrant articles at town meeting? Because I won't be on the committee anymore, and you will be vice chair, so.
And, and so Mike, Mike Farrell, not Mike Farrell, but the other Mike, Mike Anderson will, will be there to be able to provide some background information, should anybody from the, I mean, I'll be there, your general will be there. But Mike will be there as the facilities director, so he'll be able to answer any, any questions regarding the actual projects themselves.
And these, these articles that we're talking about, don't have numbers yet?
No, that's why I said, you got the sneak preview, there still was work to do on some language developments and all of those things.
Okay.
Subcommittee reports, budget and finance, I'm gonna guess, nothing?
Nothing yet.
Um, governance?
We had a governance meeting at the end of March and it was regarding the headlights policy.
Which you will, you will see in your next packet for distribution. So, that's one of those, you have to go through the three meetings.
Okay, uh, negotiating, we have executive session for that. Um, public relations?
Uh, we had a public relations meeting last week and we were discussing, we were looking about how we could make good use of constant, the service constant contact as a means to, of, of email marketing, um, to get in touch with every, people in the community.
Yeah, we're sort of still exploring what the different kinds of things we might consider, and then I think we'll need to pick a few, because we probably can't do everything.
Right, but it's, it's a very useful service.
Yeah, it's, at, um, beginning of the school year, there was a PTA meeting and, and you know, the PTA president sends out that PTA link. And the way that works, it goes to all the room parents and then the room parents send it to their class. And there was discussion about consolidating that into a single list, and somebody mentioned a service.
Constant contact?
It wasn't constant contact, because that was one I was familiar with and the one they mentioned, I wasn't familiar with. But it might, they, they ended up not using it, I don't think they could get anybody to coordinate that many email addresses. But, um, it might have been free. I know constant contact is not free, so I would contact the PTA, Jennifer Greenkilt, and see if I'm remembering this correctly and if there's a name of a service. Well, it's worth, you know. Services now, I mean, mail chimp is free for a while and then, or up to a certain number of people and, you know, all of them. So, there, it's worth comparing.
Yeah, I'll definitely.
There's a number, there's, there's multiple different.
Um, safety, who's the meeting today?
We have a meeting today, yes, um, and we discussed, what did we discuss? Bus safety, fire drills that are coming up, and, uh, staff IDs. After April vacation, staff will be wearing IDs on lanyards.
So, we all, so we all have, um, these things, these little, um, what do we call them? ID badges, thank you, ID badges. Um, but they, they're obviously an ID, but they also get us, get you into the, to the door. So, like, when I come up to the door at Pearlie, I just put this up and it lets me in, I don't have to bother the door person. Um, Mike Anderson has all of these, you know, programmed and different people are programmed for different times. Like, I'm programmed for any time in any building, but others may be programmed just for the school day through three o'clock. Um, but we are, as part of our security, uh, process, we are asking everyone to wear these. So, now, Mike went around and took everybody's picture that didn't have an ID, that was done through the, um, school picture companies and, um, you know, I, we're getting a lot of good positive feedback on these and, uh, you know, to me, they're, they're very, um, they're very helpful. In fact, um, you know, if you use it the way it's supposed to be, you don't set the alarm off and get the police to come, which I have done twice now, but I think I've gotten myself acclimated as to what the mistakes are that I was making. So, uh, I won't do them anymore, but, um, they're, they are very, very convenient, just to be able to come and not have to fumble around with keys and, um, we can keep track of them better, um, everything is catalogued and, and organized and Mike has that all, um, taken care of.
And we bought a new, we bought a new software program so that if Carol lost her badge, she just has to let Mike know and he deactivates the card, so if somebody found her card, she couldn't, they couldn't get into the building.
And, and you wouldn't necess, if you saw this, you wouldn't necessarily think it's a fob, you'd think it's just an ID, right? Um, but, you know, that certainly is a, um, you know, is a, is a helpful safety, safety, uh, technique. Plus, when we hire someone new now, they have it all set up in Laura's newly refurbished office. Um, they have, they can have it set up where, I think, or they're gonna do it in Mike's office, I'm not quite sure. But they can actually take the picture of the new employee right then and then take care of this.
Do it right through the software, you can just do it through your computer. And then you type the name and then give it, and then Mike can program the access code to what building it is and, we're very high-tech now.
Oh, yeah, now if we could just get it software, so we don't have to fill out conference records and triplicate.
I'm sure we can do that.
We'd be all set. But the safety, you know, that safety group, I have to say, you know, the principals have things that they bring and they like to discuss and the police are very helpful and, and the fire department, it's really, I think, a very productive group. And, um, you know, a lot of, a lot of good discussions get headed off as a result, issues get headed off as a result of the discussions there.
It's a great communication tool.
Yeah.
All right, uh, school building, anything?
Um, not a lot to report, so we met Tuesday, um, I think probably the, the biggest item that came out of it is that we're going to have two separate meetings, um, one for the high school and one then for Pembroke, and they're both gonna happen on the same day. And the high school meeting will start first at seven. And then, um, that'll go for however long it goes and then the Pembroke meeting will start on the heels of that. So, that's the upcoming process for how those, those two projects are gonna be handled. And, um, and that's really pretty much the extent of it, it was a nuts and bolts kind of meeting.
Yeah, they're still moving.
Yeah, they're still, they're still moving along, um, there were three or four particular issues that were discussed and, um, committee talked about and the architect took away his notes and, um, still on schedule.
Yeah, and the architect did meet with staff at the school, uh, recently, like, within the last week. So, just to go over again, you know, now they're really into the very specifics, it's good.
Great, uh, okay, moving right along to old business, the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school calendar.
Okay, so, I think Alana, thank you, Alana noticed a little bit of a discrepancy in, uh, something, so I think your, your latest and greatest is on your table. Um, I, I think it was a, just a, a difference of something that was noted on the front and then something noted differently on the back, wasn't it? It was a.
That's still, it's just a blur, the December days were contradictory, what was here.
Yes, yes, yes.
Now it's not there, now it's not contradictory.
So, now it's not, but thank you for noticing that, you know, sometimes when you look at something so often, you know, a little something like that, you just miss. Okay, so I did, I did try in your orange notes to give you a little summary of the changes that were made, uh, not to belabor the conversation for a long period of time. Um, you know, the administrative team and I, uh, and Julie and I sat together for some time trying to address the couple of things that were brought up at the last meeting. Um, so, in the interest of not having a date in, um, in January, so close, when we had January twenty first, so close to the February fifth, we just decided in January to just not have the professional development day there. But in, we did put it up in September, so you'll notice September twenty fifth was a half-day session. We're making that a full-day session and the goal there would be to front-load the work we're doing with teacher evaluation.
The big thing that, I, I didn't do a good job explaining this last time, but the reason why we're so focused on the teacher evaluation process is it's being rolled out this year. It takes a, it's an unbelievable amount of work and a huge task for everyone to accomplish. So, it really needs to be front-loaded and I should've explained that better last time when we were talking about. Wouldn't affect what we did at Christmas, but that's why we're focusing so much on getting this in here. And then the other, um, issue that we have is, um, we have a little bit more time from the teachers.
That's right.
Um, to be able to, through their, um, contract negotiations, to be able to implement different district-wide initiatives that Carol needs to focus on that have to do with frameworks, common core standards.
There's, there's, there's a ton.
That just can't get done during the normal course of business, that's why it's more of an issue this year.
Yes, so the twenty fifth in September is a full day now, okay? Um, so that, full day, full day, no school. Um, but it is a, uh, it is a professional development day for staff. Now, um, let's see, then, so now if you look at January, there, there's just, uh, the, so now we're going to January and we look at the hot, we did decide the recommendations of everyone, I know Barbie did have some reservations about it, but I, I kinda got the sense from the rest of the committee, either there wasn't a strong feeling or people thought it was a good idea. Um, and the administrative team feels it's a good idea because they're just looking at the productivity. And then I'm looking at it thinking, well, you don't have to open the schools and use the energy in the middle of the winter for two days either. So, I think there's a lot of compelling reasons why it, you know, it makes sense to do it. So, we're recommending for your consideration, the two weeks off and a, and a no, um, and a no-school day on December twenty third. Um, we did consider, Alana, your suggestion on the twentieth, um, being a half-day, but then we thought that may be pushing it because we're already doing two full, two full weeks. So, we thought it would be best to just have school end on the twentieth for the holidays and, um, not, and not take your recommendation and not have December twenty third be a school day. Um, the other thing that we looked extensively at, Julie and I, was the MCAS schedules and what, you know, what the MCAS testing windows are, trying really hard to not put, put days right in front of that or, you know. So, so basically, um, we were hoping to get five to six additional days or hours. Um, but we decided that in the interest of just trying to make something that makes educational sense, it's already going to be a change for families. And it, it does not make sense to, to have, um, so many choppy weeks, you know, I don't wanna interfere with MCAS and where the holidays fall this year. So, we actually add four additional half-days distributed throughout the year. Um, and Julie and I sat and, and really laid out like what, where, what could we use for district days? What do we need for specific professional development days? And that'll all be reflected when the professional development calendar comes before you, so you can see it.
So, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify this, so contractually, you have six additional, six professional development days total that you can require this stuff?
No, the, the teachers have a one hundred and eighty-four day. No, the, the teachers have a one hundred and eighty-four day schedule.
Okay.
So there's a day before the first day for students and oftentimes that's a, a day working in classrooms, it's not necessarily always a training day, we're gonna make it a training day, working in coordination with the union, so that's one. And then you'll notice that there are three additional full day.
Okay.
Training days.
Okay.
In addition to that, in addition to that, we're recommending four half days.
Okay.
So what will happen is the students will be released.
Yeah.
And then the teachers will work an extra hour, that's how those, that six, the one additional day.
Okay.
Instead of doing one additional day this particular year, cause we need to spread the days out to do the work over the course of the year as opposed to.
Okay.
One additional day maybe at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year. Um, our recommendation this year is to, to lay them out, so it ends up being an additional twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Right, of work that we can do in the district, but it's only four half days.
I see.
For the families.
Okay.
Okay? So those are really the, I think we addressed the things that you asked us to look at and, and that's, uh, the rec, this is the recommended calendar that, um, we're, we're putting forward for your consideration.
Can I just ask, in, in June, I've got, June twentieth is starred, but then it says June twenty-third is the projected last day of school. Is that intentional?
Yeah, I don't know.
What day is the last day?
Is that an error, Laura?
Yeah, um.
So the twentieth is starred?
Yeah, I think she's got the.
I'll just have to do the counting, but I.
It might not be because.
It should be the twen-, it should be the twentieth because that would be fifteen days and you have fifteen days for June, so it's, it's gotta be the twentieth.
Twenty.
So the note is wrong.
The note is wrong, okay.
The note is wrong, it should be June twentieth.
Okay.
So then that would mean that, uh, let's see, June twenty, twenty-seventh would be the.
Yeah.
Good catch, Pam.
Takes a committee.
It does take a committee.
Well, you know, it's a lot of details, that's it.
It is, I know.
It's very well thought out.
It's a little stuff.
There's a lot to consider in this calendar.
A lot of information, one piece of paper.
It is. Now give Laura credit.
Well, then you're like, huh, yeah. Yeah, cause it kinda becomes your roadmap for the year.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Last people.
All right, um, so we need to vote on this.
Yes.
So Chair will entertain a motion to approve the two thousand thirteen fourteen school calendar as revised.
My second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so next up is the superintendent's evaluation tool.
Did you see my? I did, I can help you with that.
Yeah, so.
Well, go ahead, ask the questions and then I'll help you.
So one of the, um, so Laura distributed all this and said, please set up, um, meetings with the superintendent, so one of the questions was, how did we get to this point?
Yes.
Like, how did we get to this process? So from my understanding, Carol, jump in if I'm wrong, we, we reviewed this with Mike Gilbert.
Are you looking at the actual?
The superintendent's evaluation form and kinda discussed MASC best practices and the way that they were doing evaluations, came up with this evaluation tool and it was part of your contract negotiations?
Yeah, my contract says that we will, that I'm being evaluated annually, um, as required by law and that, uh, the tool will be, um, developed mutually, there'll be an agreement as to what the tool looks like. So this, actually, this tool was one of a number of tools that, um, that were looked at, uh, I'm, I'm not sure, it didn't, I don't think it came from MASC, but I think it came from a bunch of collections of, of evaluations that we did, we looked at.
Just been at charting the course, yes, on Saturday. It looks familiar. It certainly, and we spent a good deal of time talking about it.
Yes.
But, but they had a, a recommended protocol with it.
Well, it's going to be completely different now because we, we're gonna, your, as school committees, we're gonna have to do the same process that the teachers are doing. And, um, so one of the things that I had done at Anne's request, I just have to follow back up with him, is, um, I spoke with Mike Gilbert about doing, cause remember when we were up in the Pearly, um.
Teachers.
Teachers room? He had handed that really nicely put together document on evaluating the superintendent and, um, he basically said that he does trainings, so Anne had asked me, so I contacted him and said, you know, Mike, could you come out and do something for the committee? My, my suggestion would be you don't try to do it at a school committee meeting, that you set up a work session, but we can all work together on it. And, um, he said he'd be very willing to do that, it, it made sense to us, since we're gonna have a new member who's gonna need to use the process, that it didn't make sense to have him come and do it with, even though Anne would probably love to hear it, it doesn't make sense then to have to try to fill in the gaps for a new member, um, after the fact, so we would need to, we need to talk to Mike about when he might be able to come and then I think as a result of that, you know, I would develop SMART goals, which you, that's what you would recognize, right? I would develop SMART goals and then we would really go through and look at the rubric and the standards and talk about the process we would use for setting goals.
I think what confused me was, so we were talking about that new procedure and the recommendation was that at the beginning of the school year, there's a meeting with the school committee and the superintendent where you identify, so we don't evaluate you on all these different
That's right.
You identify.
That's right.
In conjunction with us and I thought, did I miss that?
No, 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 no.
I was sitting there thinking, wait.
This is the last year of this process.
And, will that have to be, that new format will have to be negotiated with you?
It's the state, I, I, I'm not.
Or doesn't matter?
It, no, it, it, all it says in my contract is that we have to agree mutually on the tool.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, it's the state form, I, I'm, there's not, not much to negotiate, I'm, I'm fine with the process, we'll, we'll go forward with, with that. Um, but this, this was, you know, an attempt to have a tool.
Yes.
Right? And, um, and then the, here's where I think Anne's remembering the Mike Gilbert piece. Um, the discussion with the school committee wa- was that in other, on the, um, suggestion of our attorneys and, and Mike, um, is that the committee should meet individually with the superinten-, with me and then you would formulate your comments, right? And we would share, you know, our back and forth information individually and then you would come to the meeting and then Anne, or whoever's chairing, I guess it would be Anne cause she's here for a meeting, she would say, you know, under leadership, does anybody have any comments and then basically you would share your comments, Laura's job is to take down like verbatim notes.
It gets read right into the record.
Into the record and then.
As opposed to us submitting, cause I think the future, each committee would, members would be submitting a document that becomes public record and.
Yeah, and this we don't submit, it's your opportunity at the meeting to go through and say, you know, I think Carol did an excellent job in blah, blah, blah and these are examples.
So I don't have to make it pretty, it's just.
No, and I think some members of the committee expressed some cons-, you know, concern because when you, when you did it the other way and you, you handed everything to a designee of the committee, it could be the chair or someone else, it was the chair's discretion to determine like what comments made it into the final composite.
The big discussion about.
And, yeah, and you know, so this way it's like everybody just has the opportunity to say what they wanna say and I, you know, I've heard it all because we've chatted about it and then, you know, it goes into the record and then it is a public record, the notes are a public record and anybody who wants to know how that all, you know, comes together can get a copy of the.
Well, just for the record, for if, you know, in the future, if what happens is each school committee member submits to whoever is going to, um, compile whatever, compile the final evaluation, the recommendation was the, the, the procedure was that you would take the comments that were, or the ratings that were, the majority had agreed to and so if there was an outlier, the person whose comments were an outlier would still be available to the public.
Mm-hmm.
There, 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 even if it didn't get compiled.
Aggregated, right.
Into the final, um, evaluation, they would be able to stand up at a meeting like this and say, I didn't agree with that evaluation and anybody who would like to see why my, my, my evaluation is public record, so.
Right, well, and they can say it, they can say it at the meeting, that's the whole purpose of, of, uh, you know.
Absolutely, yeah.
Of, of the process that they were recommending we do.
And that's one of the reasons why we don't tally because if we get, you know, a couple fours and then a, a one, well, that one kinda gets, dilutes everyone else, but that one may be an important number for, you know, some specific reason that a committee member has, that's why I don't like to aggregate and it's important that everyone just shares their.
Absolutely.
And it's, and it's important that person speaks directly with me, so I have an opportunity to have a discussion.
What did I miss here?
Right, yeah, no, that's.
No, no.
It's all changing.
It's all changing.
Um, okay, so does that answer your, so does that make?
Yes, I'm fine, I'm fine, yes.
Um, and then the school committee self-evaluation, um.
Oh, Laura wants us to vote that we're going to.
Oh, I'm sorry, so we need to vote that, um, we will continue to use the superintendent's evaluation tool as presented, is that?
To approve.
What you're looking for, Laura?
But we only have to do page two once and it's just rooted in here twice, just for the.
Okay, yeah, yeah, in case you change your mind, right?
Oh, yeah. Uh, good point, so, oh, it's probably in the, probably in an effort to save paper. So Chair will entertain a motion to approve the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen superintendent's evaluation tool as presented.
My second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, this school committee self-evaluation tool, um, are there any questions on that? This is, um, the one thing that I think we are not going, we shouldn't evaluate are the, I can't, I saw it earlier, are the goals, because we did not adopt goals this year. Did we take it out?
Which one are you talking about, Anne?
Under school committee, usually we talk about.
I don't see it in here.
Number eight.
Is that it? I'm trying to find.
Yeah, number eight, to help the committee clarify its mission and set committee goals.
Oh, that's, that's the benefits of it.
Oh.
The benefits, yeah.
But, yep, in terms of.
Yeah, okay, um, we don't have goals, so you don't need to evaluate to those, so if you're reading through this and say, what are the goals? Typically, we do those in governance at the beginning of the school year.
Okay.
And that was a miss this year.
Okay.
Cause what will happen is once we go through the evaluation, it'll be clear what we missed on, so those will become the foundation for the goals next year and governance will sit down.
We'll be setting goals next year.
Yes.
Will the whole process be different as a superintendent's process is gonna be different?
We might wanna, we might wanna set some joint goals.
Yeah, it might be something that you wanna talk about.
Especially looking at the strategic plan, you know, what, what elements of that do we wanna be sure.
Usually the strategic plan.
Is the goal, yeah.
Yeah, it's usually look at what we missed last year.
Yeah.
And then where are we in the strategic plan and what do we need to get accomplished?
I mean, sometimes like I can, the one that stands out to me here is it, one year, it came out that there was some here about the committee, the new committee members, um, you know, were oriented well or something, it, it said differently and it, because it was, it was really not, everybody kind of agreed that it wasn't one of the highest scores, it drove the committee to look at it and that's why Anne sits as a chair, sits with new members and it's not just charting the course, she sits and goes through it and there's, there's an actual process, so that, sometimes when you look at how these things, um, get aggregated, there are some things that you go, oh, we should, we should do better at that. And those are goals that you can set as a school committee, based on the data.
Yeah, and it's helpful if you have, I, as you're going through this, if you say, oh, we don't do, you know, I gave it a two becau-, or, sorry, it goes the other way in this one, a three, because I remember at this point, we didn't do this, or I was confused when we did that, just so that as a committee, we can do a better job setting goals for the next year. Okay, so the Chair will entertain a motion to, um, approve the two thousand twelve thirteen school committee self-evaluation tool as presented.
So moved? My second.
Any further, uh, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any further discussion, sorry?
Just point, but you, just, just so you know, on your table is, you asked about the dates.
Oh, right.
Just so you know.
Okay, let's get this done then.
This is the date, yeah.
Okay, um, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. Um, and then we have the dates, so, um, so if you can get, um, the evaluation data back to me, what is this by? Tomorrow?
I think maybe we need to change this.
Four, five?
That was, that was five days ago, or?
Four, twelve is tomorrow.
No, six days?
Yeah, so if you can, you know what, if I can get it by next Friday, I can compile it and email it out to everybody by the following Monday before the last meeting.
The form that Laura sent to us, we'll be able to fill it out online?
Yeah, probably not.
Send it to you?
Probably not, it's probably.
Can, can everyone scan and send? Is that a problem? If you scan and send, that's great, okay.
As we were so proud of our improvements in technology here, we face one that.
Yeah.
So you, you wanna change the date from the, from the twelfth to the nineteenth?
Yeah, if everyone gets it to me the nineteenth, I can compile it.
By, by the nineteenth?
By the nineteenth.
Okay, I don't have a scanner, so somehow I'll get it.
You can bring it to us and we can help you.
Okay.
Send it to, yeah, we'll get you, we'll help you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Or just call me and we can figure out a way for you to get it. Do a fax?
No, you, Anne, you. Can I fax to you?
Yeah, you can fax to me, I don't know the number of the top.
Okay, that's okay, I can, or I can scan it and email it as it is happening.
Yeah, fax is fine too.
I may just be able to.
Okay, um, all right, next up is mobile grant acceptance.
Yes, um, Margaret has included a little, um, email message in here, um, this is not anonymous, right, Margaret?
It is not anonymous.
It is not anonymous, okay, so, um, Pearly was nominated by a parent, Mr. Settlemeier, Settlemeier, um, district manager for mobile and to receive a grant through ExxonMobil and, uh, we're very excited about the fact that there's a, is a, is a check for five hundred dollars and, um, he wants the, the materials to be used to, um, deal with math and science learning for Pearly students.
Again, another generous donation.
That's amazing.
Awesome. I see the ads on television for Exxon.
Thanks to Mr. Settlemeier and ExxonMobil.
And it's always nice when, um, parents and friends think of the schools when they see things like this and they're able to fill that out, so thank you. Um, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve, I'm sorry, to accept the donation from ExxonMobil as presented with gratitude.
So moved?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you, it's amazing, I don't think we've had a meeting that we haven't had some kind of donation to accept.
At every meeting, hasn't it?
So that's, we're always, you know, thankful for their generosity and especially even monetary is great, but time, the time and resources that people provide to us is also And especially even monetary is great, but time, the time and resources that people provide to us is also equally amazing. Okay, school choice discussion.
Well, no, last day of school.
Oh. Sorry, last day of school. So, as a school committee, we have to vote on the last day of school and knock on wood?
There will be no more snow days.
Do you wanna rethink that?
I'm so confident there's no more snow days.
They had thirty inches in the Midwest.
I know.
And some places, we're supposed, they're supposed to get snow tomorrow, but not Georgetown, thankfully.
All right, you heard it here first.
Nobody should plan on a snow day tomorrow.
All right, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the last day of school as June twenty-sixth.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, school choice discussion.
School choice discussion. So, I apologize, there's nothing in the orange notes about this, because I, Laura reminded me that we're getting phone calls daily regarding requests for school choice and when are decisions going to be made. So, and this is the time of year we, we do discuss it. And we, we kind of make two, two decisions. One is, if we choose not to be a school district that accepts school choice, then we need to notify the state of that change. And then, secondly, if we're going to open slots, we need to determine what amount of slots at what grades. So, in the past, what we've done is, we have decided to stay a school choice district, even in years where you haven't been able to open any, any slots. And I would advise the committee to do, to continue to do that. In terms of available slots, I, I've been, I've polled the administrators and we've obviously looked at some information. So, just, just, just on your table, the actual class sizes for elementary, you can see, you can see here that. At this point in time, kindergarten is still something we're just not completely, Margaret's doing the kindergarten registration soon, right, like this, next week, the week after?
Well, the kindergarten registration is actually a rolling process.
Okay.
So, we don't have a deadline.
Okay.
The numbers are based on.
On your table?
No.
No?
No, just do.
Sorry.
No.
Wait, you.
Sorry, Margaret.
Sorry, Margaret.
No, we don't have the.
Okay, so here's, I'm going to pass it to you.
It's different, I'm sorry.
It's different. Go ahead, Margaret, I'm sorry.
So, when I'm looking ahead to next year, I'm, it's a projection, so I'm looking at numbers of children coming from our pre-K, which at this point is sixty-four. Then I'm looking at private pre-K, which at this point is twenty-eight, and then looking at the past, how many children move in.
Right.
And last year it was seven, including school choice. So, again, I'm projecting ninety-nine to a hundred students next year. So, which would mean classes of twenty.
Okay.
So, at this point in time, you know, if you look at those numbers, we've been trying to stay within, you know, kindergarten, you know, twenty or less. But, you know, K, I'm sorry, one, two, and, you know, usually three, you know, in the twenty-two to twenty-three range is kind of optimal. And then beyond that, you know, we've said twenty-five, even though we don't consider that to be an optimal number. But, that's kind of what the, what the guidelines have been in the district in the past. So, when we see numbers that are close to that already, we're, we don't know who's going to move in over the course of the, of the next several months into the next year. So, we, at this point in time, we are not recommending opening any elementary slots. Again, with the exception of maybe looking at the kindergarten, because we're not, just not absolutely positive. In terms of the middle school, again, we're, we're not recommending additional spots at the middle school. Now, Peter, do you wanna come up for a minute, Peter? So, this is the discussion we, we have often, is looking at the middle high school and trying to determine whether or not, that's probably mine notes. Whether or not we have slots that we might open. And Peter's conversation with me is that he thought perhaps five slots at the ninth grade was conservative. You actually think you could take more. So, I asked Peter a few questions in preparation, just so he could answer questions back and forth with you. Because this is the only place we are considering requesting approval to take children. So, Peter, you were going to get a little bit of information, so is there something maybe you could inform the committee about in terms of average cla- not average classes, but your enrollment at grade?
Yep, so, we are projecting for next year, a hundred and thirteen twelfth graders, ninety-eight eleventh graders, one hundred tenth graders. And there's currently a hundred and twenty-six students in the eighth grade right now. Fourteen of them are accepted to Woody Tech. Our best estimates, uh, seven will probably actually attend. Two people have been, will be attending Essex Aggie. And there are twenty-four applied to private schools. I would conservatively say that probably twelve of them will go. Hard to say how many kids might move in over the summer, but some do. So, I, I would think that if we took five choice students in, we still would be, you know, under a hundred and twenty, probably around a hundred and fifteen in the ninth grade, which we should be able to handle.
What do you think in, I'm sorry, what was the number for moving in, did you think?
It's hard to say, three, two or three.
Three.
How many school? Oh, I'm sorry, Brad.
Just clarification on this chart?
Yes, go ahead.
So, how do the numbers just then relate to this?
Take, if you take grade eight.
Yeah.
In October twelve.
Yeah.
They're gonna be the freshmen next year.
Yeah.
So, he's saying that about twenty of those will go to Woody or Essex Aggie and other schools? So, that gets you down to a hundred eight, ru- roundly.
Okay.
So, add three that could move in over the summer, you're at a hundred eleven. And if you say that, if he's come, he, he's recommending five choice spots and you're at a hundred eighteen. Rough, ra- I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I should tell you that five choice students are graduating.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you.
Okay.
So, at least we would maintain, if you didn't take any choice students anywhere else.
So, of the ninety-eight in your senior classes, you have five are.
Yes.
Choice.
Yep. You, you could, we could take some in the sophomore class, too, could probably take five in the sophomore class. We don't recommend taking choice students after the tenth grade.
Next year's sophomore class or this, yeah, so this year's freshman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, I'm just looking at the size of this year's fifth grade class, that's that big class.
It's the crazy class.
And this year's fifth?
Oh, I'm sorry, not fifth.
Seventh.
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 Yep.
No, I'm, I was.
A hundred fifty-one.
So, here's, this is my ignorance of the middle high school.
Twelve sets of twins.
And triples in there somewhere.
No, no, triples moved.
Oh, triples moved, okay.
Sorry.
Just spin my head a little bit.
Triplets in the district, though.
The middle school and the high school, in terms of the amount of space that they occupy. Is it completely separate? Because I'm looking at the fifth.
Not anymore.
Yeah, the fifth grade class is a hundred and thirty-one students.
Oh, okay, that's.
That's moving into sixth grade, right? That big bubbly class is moving from Pembroke. Am I correct?
Yes, you're right, yep.
I don't have that number.
What is it?
We think, when we think of the big bubbly class, we look at the one fifty-one.
Yeah, raise that.
The second big bubbly class.
The second big bubbly class is moving also to the, from Pembroke to the middle high school.
Correct.
So, that, I'm just thinking in terms of what's that doing to space?
To have two, it's a good point to have two of the big classes.
Going through those.
Well, interestingly, if you look at it, the grade eight is one twenty-eight right now. Um, so.
It's kind of similar to the one thirty-one.
It's similar to the one thirty-one. So, in the, and you know what, this, I'll back up for a second, middle school is sixth, seventh and eighth.
Right.
And they're on the top, not completely, but academically.
Yeah, they are, act- they are academically, but there are, there are high school classes up there now.
In avail, in extra rooms.
So, I'm just saying, so the total number of kids.
Yeah.
I mean, that's twenty-one more kids than are currently in the sixth grade next year.
Right, but you're moving out a grade, the grade eight at one twenty-eight is being replaced.
By one thirty-one.
By one thirty-one.
Right.
By three, I see.
Does that make sense?
The, the, up to date numbers as of today are, six, did I go through that? Sixth grade's a hundred and eleven, current. Seventh grade is one forty-nine, eighth grade is one twenty-six. Ninth grade's a hundred, ninety-eight, one thirteen, and the senior class is ninety-nine.
Okay.
So.
I.
Go ahead, Peter, I'm sorry.
I understand your point. But if you look at the class sizes in the high school, the average academic class size is sixteen. So, if you're gonna add five or ten kids to that mix, it's, it's not even, it's barely gonna touch the class size. So, there are actually, there's rooms in the classroom, but there aren't enough classrooms.
There's desks, but there aren't enough places to put the, there's not enough rooms to hold the desks.
There's not enough rooms for all of the teachers.
To have their own room.
To have their own room. But there's room.
In the classroom.
For more kids, I get it, I get what you're saying, okay.
And it's confusing, because we're always talking about space constraints.
And decreasing the number of students won't change.
I mean, the, a building has a certain capacity, and so I don't, I don't know, you know, what's the, what's it like in the hallways? As students are trying to go from one class to the next, you know, is there so much congestion?
I wish I knew the number of the total students, but it was, it was, it might even have been six hundred or something, ten years ago. And I can honestly tell you that I can't notice a difference between then and now. It's just, it's.
I, I never have a sense that there's congestion, well, Cole, is there congestion in the hallway?
I mean, honestly, when, like, walking through the halls, I have to say, it's really not that bad. People are at their lockers and that's, probably takes up the most space. Other than that, everyone's just moving. I don't find myself just standing still waiting for people to move, ever, ever, so.
Or elbowing your way through to get to class on time, or, yeah, just, that's, that was, I just was wondering, again, I said, that's my ignorance, I had it in the high school.
No, it's a very, it's a very valid point.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a good question. And it's something we go through, I mean, that is important for everyone to think about.
But not having enough classrooms, I mean, so we're not talking about classroom size, you know, if you need to have a certain number of classes, you can't really have two classes going simultaneously in one.
No.
Room, so, it's a problem.
Hence, the reason why we use the, the stage for, for.
Yeah.
For the music classes.
So, the other little, little element, the little wrinkle, if you turn the paper over, is, okay, so how does this impact our stand, standing with the actual choice account? So, I think we presented this as part of the budget to you. So, you know, if we, if we assume we get five thousand dollars per student that comes in. If we take five students, or we take ten students, that, that helps, obviously, to, you know, afford to, to have some of these things on this, on this grant. I mean, I, obviously, our goal is still to continue to move things off, because we don't want these grants, this grant in particular, or this, this revolving account in particular, to be funding recurring expenses.
So, Peter, you're recommending five?
Ninth and five, he said he could take five, ten, that's, but he said nothing beyond ten.
Oh, so you did recommend five more in this year's freshmen for next year's?
I, I could take them easily, yes. But again, we don't, we don't like, because of our curriculum and our graduation requirements, we don't recommend taking kids in the junior year.
Because then they don't have enough time to really take.
Would you be comfortable taking eight?
Eight, yeah, freshman.
Eight what? I'm sorry.
Freshmen, eight freshmen? It's, the financial impact is complicated, because we, I mean, we spend money on that.
But we.
You know, we get money, but we spend money, so it's, it's not just a pure, it's not a money necessarily.
No, the, the goal of doing it isn't making money.
It, no. Yeah, I was gonna say, we have to stay way away from that.
The end effect isn't making money.
No, no, no.
That's why.
No, I mean, if you look at member people expenditures.
It's a funding trap.
So, so aren't we trying to get away from this potentially?
Yes.
Get away from what, Rob, I'm sorry?
From school choice, per se?
Oh, I don't think we're, well, I don't think we're wanting to get away from school choice as an opportunity, because there are.
Other benefits.
There are a lot of benefits to school choice. What we don't ever wanna do is compromise the educational program for the kids in Georgetown for whom their parents pay taxes and, and have moved to this town for a good reason. But there are advantages to school choice as well, if there is space available. So, what we're trying to get away from, I think, is overrelying on the school choice revolving account to fund recurring expenses.
These three teachers, I mean, to avoid the funding trap, you wouldn't have any teachers on here.
Right.
And you would do things like, Peter had, was looking for computers this year.
Yeah, major technology upgrades and.
You'd do that, you'd.
Curriculum, new curriculum, because he's got, you know, classes that are coming in, you know, that's what you'd argue.
That's what you, that's what you do for, you wouldn't continually fund.
So, that's, I think, Rob, we're, we say we wanna try to get away from, that's what it is, that we wanna get away from recurring expenses.
You know, the other thing is, to your point, you don't wanna have, you don't wanna say, yeah, I can take, you know, ten kids a year. Because that way, we can build the pool at Pembroke. That have been dying forties.
Don't let anybody think we're planning to build a pool at Pembroke.
No, but it, no, it doesn't, but.
Can we have a rink, too?
Yeah, so how many kids come, no.
Peter will coach hockey.
So, I, I think that's the point, the point is, like, to, and in the past, what we've always done is we've looked at average class sizes by grade and then determined how many spaces we have available. So, we don't need to vote on this this week.
You don't need to, but I, I'm telling you, we do need to vote next time, because number one, I gotta hit the May first deadline.
We need.
If we're, if we're not gonna become a school choice.
But I think may, I think maybe what we do is we lay this out for everybody to look at and understand the class sizes. You know, what we're gonna look at next year, like, it, yeah, so you can see, like, grade nine is, I mean, I have it chicken scratch, but just so the committee can see it.
What is it, Ian, I'm sorry, what more?
Next year, grade nine is gonna be.
The full projection for.
Yeah, just your estimate.
Next year.
What you think and then do a column.
With Peter's numbers.
Yes.
Just another column added to that. As a projection, obviously, it's, can't be an actual.
Just an idea.
Right.
So, the, so you only think you're gonna lose twelve to other? You think twenty-four were accepted to other schools, other than?
I think we're gonna lose more than that.
He said, applied, yeah.
So, I'm being conservative to say half.
When do they have to let you know? Just, I'm not saying that.
Fortunately, unfortunately, exactly.
Okay.
So, we chase them for the most part.
Okay.
And sometimes, we don't know until September.
Okay. All right.
Just curious, why don't they, where would a mechanism be to have them told?
Well, we, I think, we send them a letter, and so they, sometimes they don't respond. Some parents are very good about it and tell us, and sometimes, people don't tell us, so.
I think there's probably reasons, I mean.
Sure. Listen to many families argue.
You're going to the town, I go, I'm going to.
Yeah, I, I.
Fight that goes on also, whoever was.
I, I think, I think it's much bigger than, than making a purposeful decision not to let you know, I think there's a lot of behind the scenes.
So, if you, if you'd like to get, if I could gather a little bit more information, given what, what we're talking about here, certainly, we'll put it on for a vote for the twenty-fifth, that's fine.
That would help me.
Yeah, because my concern would be if twenty-four, if we can add more based on what happened in last year's class, then we should think about that.
Right.
And I'd hate to miss that opportunity.
Last year was an aberration, though, com- you know, statistically, from.
Yeah.
What happened, what was it, what is?
We had about, was it seventeen percent?
Seventeen percent, thirty-two, I'm just looking here.
It was more than thirty kids went to private school.
Wow.
And normally, it's about seven or eight percent.
Oh, wow.
So, last year was.
And I, I think there was actually some contact made with each of those families, just to get a little more information as to, you know, why and, and, you know, I think we gleaned some information from that, which was, I think, helpful and. You know, I think we can't start talking to kids in the middle school soon enough about the kinds of offerings and opportunities. And kids like Cole and others sell it better than Peter or I or anybody ever will. So, you know, I think it is important, you know, when I look at kids like Cole and others, you know, that I, that I meet every day, and what they're ga- what they're getting out of Georgetown High School, in terms of not only the academics, but just the opportunities to participate in clubs and activities and, you know. Cole could show you his resume and you'd be, you know, exhausted, just looking at all the things he does. But, you know, the fact that he, he's afforded the opportunity here is, is great. And sometimes, I think, young kids don't know, you know, it's like, oh, I'm going to Saint John's Prep because my friend went there. Well, you know, maybe that's the best alternative for them, but if, if it's because they really don't know what the opportunities are here, and they don't have enough engagement with high school kids that can really show them.
Or their parents.
Or their parent, or even outreach to their parents, for sure.
I know next year, they're planning on doing a club fair, maybe at the freshman orientation, just, you know, get kids to join clubs and to know exactly what we offer, because I know some kids really don't. They have no idea what's going on, other than they see the boards and they really don't even know what it's about.
The only thing I would recommend is to do it in eighth grade.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, the early, you can't be, you can't do early enough.
That's when it'll, that's when it all starts.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, I personally would love to even just give a presentation on, you know, what I've done. And I know other kids who've been successful in the Georgetown school system would be very willing to do something like that, to the eighth graders, yeah.
It's a fabulous idea.
Yeah.
At the beginning of the year.
It's their school, you know, they're, they're the ones that, you know, they, they've taken advantage of the opportunities and. It's, it's great to have them engaging, younger kids. Okay, so we'll get you some more information. Okay, thank you, Peter, appreciate you having anything ready.
All right, so, moving right along, we are gonna have an executive session. So, we will, so we'll adjourn, I just have a couple of dates that I think I should let everyone know about. First, Election Day, April thirtieth, remember, I think the last day to register was earlier this week. Secondly, town meeting is Monday, May sixth, at the Georgetown Middle High School at seven o'clock. So, every, even though we have Election Day.
That's a little confusing, that Election Day is coming before town meeting.
Before town meeting, but you need, you need to go to town meeting.
Unusual.
Yes, everyone needs to attend. And also, May twenty-fourth is the High School Art Show and Film Festival from six to eight P M. Tickets are not required, and we'll, at the next meeting, we'll give more information. Tickets are not required, and we'll, at the next meeting, we'll give more information.
Yes. Laura, when's the PTA fashion show?
May second?
May, it's, it's coming up, that's.
Okay, PTA fashion show, we'll, um, probably look on the school website, we might have the information.
So we'll, we'll send you the date.
Hilton Ferncroft? And it's gonna be twenty dollars.
Doubletree.
Oh, Doubletree?
Ferncroft.
Okay.
Is that in Danvers or?
Danvers, Field, Coco Keys.
Yeah, okay, I know exactly where that is.
Tickets are twenty dollars a piece and.
Not pretty sure how to get them yet, but.
Nine, ninety to a hundred of our kids and some of our, um, grownups are also in the show, so.